...of Community Services and Public Safety Committee for Monday, December 5th, to order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, please be seated. I'll note that as Chair of the meeting, I am present. Gerald Dawson is online, Alice Howard is present, so we have a quorum, and we have Paul Somerville here with us as well. We anticipate that others may be joining us if they're in person or online, we'll have to wait and see how that develops. I've been assured that public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. So our next item will be approval of the agenda. May I have a motion in that regard, Mr. Somerville?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the approval of the appointment of Marilyn Harris as a Beaufort County Council Representative on the Beaufort Housing Authority.
That's what the motion you're going to make?
Yeah, the motion to amend the agenda.
Right, okay. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Dawson, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, is there any objection to amending the agenda? Hearing no objection, the agenda is amended. Now we will move back to item number four for approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Amended.
Sorry, amended. Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Dawson, thank you, I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will approve the amended agenda without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the agenda has been approved. And I'll note the arrival of Mr. Glover to join us here on the dais. Item number five is the approval of the minutes for the October 10th Community Service Meeting. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, we will approve the minutes without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the minutes have been approved. I'll also note for the record that Mr. Cunningham, the Vice Chair, has joined us at this meeting as well. Do we have any citizen comments online or from the audience? Sarah?
No, sir, we don't.
Okay. So we can move now to the agenda items. The only agenda item, well, there are two agenda items, having had the agenda amended. The first agenda item is a discussion of a pending ordinance to provide maintenance work on private roads. And Neil Desai is here to help us with this. Before he makes his comments, I'm going to try and do some introductory comments. This was voted on twice with positive results, and at the third reading, it was voted by council to return this matter to the Community Services and Public Safety Committee to have additional information provided to council. So this committee convened on that last month, and a meeting was held, and additional information was provided with regard to the ordinance which was attempting to provide maintenance work on private roads with public funds. And a lot of additional information was given to us to consider, because in reality, the first two votes on the first and second reading, the council wasn't completely informed on what the situation was that existed in the county with other existing ordinances, nor were we fully informed, through no one's fault, that this action actually, if we would undertake it, would more than likely simply be illegal. So we convened the meeting, and the meeting clearly showed us that there were ordinances in place already, and had been for a number of years, that would allow the county to participate in a program to provide maintenance for private roads that would involve not only the road work, but also tree work that may have to be done so that tall or high emergency vehicles like fire trucks could make their way down these roads. And that ordinance in place stated that the people who lived on the private road would have to give their permission, and then they would also have to agree to pay for the work that was undertaken. And they could do that with a one-time payment or by the creation of a special tax district where they could put the cost of it that would be paid by all of the people who lived on the private road on their property taxes so they could make that payment over time. There's also a process in place in the county that would allow people who own a private road to make application to the county for the county to take over that private road and make it a county road, and then the county would incur the obligation of maintaining that road for use, for normal use, and also for access by emergency vehicles. That was the information that was pretty much provided to us at the Community Services meeting, and it was made pretty clear that the existing ordinance that was passed a number of years ago was the ordinance that would allow us to do this kind of work with permission and an agreement for payback of the expenses, and the matter that we were undertaking, simply to provide public funds to maintain a private road, was an inappropriate way to go. That was the information we received at the committee meeting. So I think it's incumbent upon us today here to further that discussion and decide what it is we want to return to the council for action. It would seem to me, based on what we now know, that I would hope when we go back to council that there would be no motion for a third reading. If there was a motion for a third reading, I would hope it would not get a second. If it did get a second, and then it passed, I think we would find ourselves in the situation of having actually taken an action to authorize an illegal activity, and then I think we would probably look foolish, and then I think the county would have to sue us to have that ordinance repealed, and we would look foolish again. So I think that moving down that path is probably not the best way to go, and I think that's what we have to consider here today, what our actions would be at the full council meeting when this is presented for all of our review and consideration. So I've asked Neil Desai to come and give us additional information, and he's been kind enough to put together through some extensive research on the extent of the issue as it relates to the maintenance of the private roads, and essentially, I think he may even have some indication of what the costs may be going forward. So Neil, if you'd be kind enough to tell us what you've discovered?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman, and rest of the committee members. Working with our GAS department, we did an evaluation of all the county, Beaufort County private dirt roads. This list amassed to 1,139 private roads, which equals 287 miles.
Can you speak up just a little bit?
Sorry.
Yeah.
So it was a total of 1,139 private roads, and that equaled to about 287 total miles, adding all those together. Additionally, we looked at work effort and how to categorize the work effort, and we decided to categorize it into three different baskets, so to say. Minimal effort, if you would, would be just coming into a road and grading it, no materials, no cutting of limbs, but just coming in and grading the road, so to say, and that rough estimate came out to be about $10,000 per mile.
$10,000 a mile?
Yes, sir. Obviously, each road varies in length, and so if you can just extrapolate and use that as a guideline. Medium effort, what I considered would be is anything that would be grading a road, providing some additional rock, crush-and-run material, anything of that nature, and also cutting up the limbs and all of that all. That amassed to about 18K a mile. And finally, large efforts, which would be numerous truckloads of material, extensive amounts of grading, and then a significant amount of limbing up or whatnot to get the road. Distance and vertical distance, okay for large vehicles and emergency vehicles, that amassed about 35K per mile.
Okay. Are there any questions from anyone present here in the chamber or online with regard to my comments or to Mr. Desai's comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yep.
The existing policies that you kind of went over, there is a method now where the work could be done in an emergency situation and then charged back to the owner?
No, it's not in an emergency situation. They would evaluate the condition of the road, and I think the fire department has agreed to go and decide which were the ones that would be the ones that would be most severely in need of that work, and it's to get emergency vehicles down there, essentially.
Okay.
And it may involve the road itself, and it may involve the trees overhanging the road. And we could use public funds to do that work with permission of the owners of the road and their agreement to eventually repay us for the cost of the money that we used to engage in that activity. And they could pay us with a one-time payment that's divided among or between the people who own the road, and/or they could create a special tax district for the work on that road, and they could attach those funds to a payout over time on their property taxes on an annual basis.
But that assessment hasn't been done, but it could be done.
That's right. That's the way the ordinance that currently exists, the language in the ordinance states that, and it would have to be done on an individual basis, road by road, with the people who live there. And I think, I'm not sure if the ordinance said 75% of the homeowners or if it's 100%. I don't remember exactly.
Seventy-five.
How was 75%?
Yeah.
So I don't know what happens to the other 25% who don't want to do it, but there is, that's the only way at this point, Alice, where we could actually put the money out, but they'd have to agree to pay us back. And now you say, well, suppose everybody agrees to a property tax, to a special tax district, and then some of the homeowners decide they're not going to pay their property taxes. Well, then we're faced with an additional issue of a tax sale of the property to reclaim the money that we haven't received, which further compounds the problem for the homeowner who really was simply trying to get the road fixed. But I think the other option is, and I don't understand, I don't think there's any obstacle to doing it, other than the fact the county may be reluctant at times, if they offer the private road up to become a public road and owned by the county, then the county has the obligation to do that work. But I'm not an expert on why the county would not accept a public road. Can you help me with that, Neil, or is that putting you on the spot?
So certain situations, the existing road may not have the full right-of-way sometimes we're looking for.
Right.
And that might be a constraint for us. Additionally, a historical road, particularly in a low-lying area, may have some wetlands that are impacting it, so there's some environmental impacts there, and so numerous issues like that can sometimes...
Prevent us from accepting. That's correct. Gerald, I see movement, but I don't have a sound. Not yet.
How about now?
Okay, perfect.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right. To your point, Larry, and to Alice's question about the, I mean, the county actually doing the work on the road and actually providing the citizens' access into the road. In the past, we have, we have already, the county, acted on one of those ordinance that allowed the residents on the road, I think it was either 71 or 75%, as Neil said earlier, percent of the citizens had to agree to actually reimburse the county for the work that is done on these private roads to make it passable. We had a situation in the Burton community where Kato Lane is and was a private road, and whenever rain or any inclement weather, those folks could not get in and out of that road, and if they did, then the potholes were so deep until it was actually hard for them to egress and ingress out of there. So we came up with the ordinance to actually allow them to get 71 to 75% of the citizens on that road to actually sign their petition to have the county maintain the road with the obligation of those citizens on that road reimbursing the county for the maintenance of that road. And Neil, correct me if I'm wrong, are we not maintaining that road today?
I believe so.
Okay.
Gerald, is it your understanding that when the maintenance is performed, that there is a reimbursement by the people who live there?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, then that works. Great, thanks, Gerald, appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure I understand the road that Mr. Dawson is talking about. That is a private road that is being maintained by the people of that road, and they're paying the county to maintain that road? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's a private road that is being maintained by the county at the expense of the...
Property owners?
Property owners on that road.
So that is actually happening at this time? I just want to make sure I understand.
Too much, too much.
Okay.
Neil, can you confirm that? Is that what's happening on that road?
If it's a county road, we are maintaining it.
No, 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 no. The road that he's referring to is a private road, and what he's saying is that the citizens on that road is paying for the maintenance of that road, and they're paying that to the county.
Yeah, did they agree?
That's what, that's what the ordinance says.
Right.
And I'm asking if that's true, that's all.
Well, we'd have to get the road name so he could look it up and tell us. I don't think he's got it in the back of his head, but Mr. Dawson seems pretty positive that that's happening.
Sure, I understand.
For some reason, I'm remembering that road is half-county, and then the back half is private, so if you give me time to check, I'll get back that answer to you.
So you might be just maintaining the front part.
Paying a certain portion of it, and that happens pretty frequently.
Right, so it doesn't not equate to this ordinance here if you're maintaining the front part?
Correct.
Because that's a county road.
Correct.
Yeah, it would have to go all the way through, they'd have to reimburse it for that.
Yes, and that's what he needs to research.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know whether that's true, Gerald, or not, but it is being maintained at this time, and it may be a county road.
The first half is a county road, we are maintaining that portion.
We'd have to, we'd have to find out. You may be talking about two different roads. Mr. Dawson knows the name of the road. Gerald, do you know the name of the road?
It's Kato Lane, K-A-T-O Lane, Kato Lane.
Okay. You'll have to get back to us on that, because that question, if we don't answer it tonight, it'll come up at the council meeting, I'm sure. Anything else from anyone online? Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think you summed it up really well at the beginning. I was the one that, you know, thought about bringing this back here to get some more information, and honestly, I was kind of hoping we would find a way to make this work, whether it was a payment program to get that reimbursed, but it doesn't seem like that's going to happen. I am with you on it, I don't think it should get motion for a third reading. If we have to move it forward to county council to end the third reading, I think that should be our next move, just to make sure that happens. If we need to leave it here in committee, I don't know exactly how that works, if we have to go back to get it turned down. I did have one question, because I was having trouble hearing it, it's my fault because I'm not there. How many miles was it totaled?
287.
287.
So 287, and let's say the middle of the road is 18,000, so we're looking at over $5 million is what we'd be looking at.
That's a big...
To do those roads.
Okay, you must have a calculator.
I've definitely pulled one out, you already know.
Okay, we'll take your word on it.
Thank you, I have my comment.
I think, you know, in answer to your comment, I think you're right. If you look at the first two votes, we were trying to find a way to get this done, because the votes the first two times were positive. So there was a great deal of effort and thought, I think, that everyone put into it to try and have a way to make this happen, and then we discovered, when it was sent back for review and consideration and additional information to be developed, that there was no way at this point to do it other than through the existing ordinances that we have. And that's, I think, where we find ourselves at the moment. Mr. Glover?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask you, this is the only thing on the agenda...
There's one other item that has to do with the appointment of someone to the Beaufort Housing Authority, but that's simple.
Yeah, would you indulge me with some time to just talk through some things?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it, because it's probably going to take me a minute.
Okay.
And so I'm asking permission first before I get started.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, thank you. Let me say this, that one of the major concern that I have in rural Beaufort County is that a lot of land is owned by a lot of different people, particularly on St. Helena, and it's, and some of it is actually heirs' property, so there's no question about that, and some of the problems we've been having with heirs' property just getting easement is trying to work through county ordinance to get heirs' property resident to sign easements just for, just get easements to do stormwater or to do roads, et cetera. This problem is not, is a typical problem all over the county, but is more pronounced on St. Helena and in the Sheldon area. And with that, we still have the same problem. Whether I live in the city of Beaufort or whether I live in the town of Bluffton, drainage is a problem, and getting access to roads is a major problem. Having just dirt roads, but maintaining that dirt road is necessary for a lot of people. I got a map that I would love for Ms. Brock to pull up, dealing with the, for just for your information, and the first one is actually the Haywood-Frip Road. If you could just pull that map up, and I got to see it myself. Yes. Now, based on the ordinance that we have, if you look at that road there, the Haywood-Frip, and the owner of that property, all the owners of that property do not have a house beyond the Major Oaks Plantation Road, but yet the road is on one people, one family land. There's several parcels there, 61, 41, and what's that, 61E is one family. There's no house back there for them. But the other parcels of land, there's at least 10 houses back there. But the road itself is owned by one family that doesn't need access to get to their home, but the folks behind there need it. If you did an ordinance based on, if you implemented that ordinance here, the only person that would be paying the taxes would be the family that don't even need the property. I mean, they need the maintenance of the road, because they don't live back there. But that's what we call a legacy road, and if we wanted to close that road right now, we couldn't, because that road had existed over 20 years. So the family back there are using or egressing on somebody else's property just to get to theirs. But if there's a need for emergency vehicles to get there, that family would not necessarily, wouldn't even think about an ordinance like this here so that those folks back there would have access to their road. You pull up the other one to... Uh you pull up the other one, Tecumseh Lane?
If we go there?
Yes, sir.
The the people that are using that road don't own it.
They don't own that road.
So if they were to use this ordinance, the only people that would, we would need permission are the people that don't live there. And they would be the only people who would have to pay for the uh maintenance of the road. And the people who are using the road wouldn't have to, is that?
Based on this ordinance, yes, sir.
I hear you.
Right.
Okay.
The other one is Tecumseh Lane, and if you pull that up for me, Sarah, I appreciate it. The front part of this road is on Tomfip Road. And the owners of Tomfip Road, um the the front part of Tomfip, Tomfip Road and Tecumseh Road do not want that road to be a county road. It used to be a county road, but when the county looked at that road and they said, uh either you be private or you be a county, the folks on the front part said, "We want it to be a private road." So the folks behind that road is suffering right now, because they can't get access to and from on on that road because of weather. So the owners of the front part is saying, "No, we want it to be private," but they don't live back there. The folks who live back there are complaining because they can't get out when there's bad weather.
So they're using the private road with permission of the people who own it.
It's been, it's a legacy road, it's been there, you can't close it.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, sir.
They can't, it's impassable for them.
Yes.
But they wouldn't, again, be responsible for the repayment for maintaining it, because they don't own it. Even if they wanted it.
No, they do own the back part, and they would be responsible for it if if you put this ordinance in 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 force, but the folks at front part would not be paying for it, because they don't live back there. So it could happen on this road here, but the people at the front of Tecumseh Lane and Tomfip Road uh do not live back there at all.
When you say live back there, they don't live on the road?
Down that road, Tecumseh Lane.
People who own the road don't live on it.
The front part.
Okay.
Nobody owns the total road, it's all property road that at some point in time was created um to get to to their property. But there was probably no right of ways or anything of that nature. Now, if I was going to finance a house back there, uh I may have to, I may not finance, and that's some of the problems citizens are having, because they don't have access to, the financing company would not have access to that property if, for whatever reason, there's a foreclosure. So those are some of the problems, but right now, it's a dirt road and the folks back there lives back there, most of them have a mobile home of some sort. So it's not a permanent home. But they live back there and they can't um um for them to to apply for this ordinance, they would have to uh get the folks to agree.
Yeah, cause they don't own the road.
They're all of it.
Yeah, I get it.
It is on portion, and the portion they own would be where the parcel is.
Yeah, so they could get the part that they live on fixed, but they'd never get to it, cause they couldn't, it's impassable from the front.
Sure. And to show the last one, and this one here is a um a legacy cemetery uh down that, this road here. And it comes off a seaside road, and um it goes all the way to um yeah, that, all the way, and that's a cemetery at the end, but you can see the amount of um parcels that are there just to get this ordinance put in place, and this is just uh so folks can get even to a ancestral cemetery. Um but it's impassable even for the folks that are living there at this time. Again, some of that is heirs' property. Now, the last map I I I, and you can just pull up one of those, uh uh Susan, I mean, uh Sarah, it deals with stormwater drainage, and ever since I got on council, I've been working on getting easement for this one big, major drainage area on St. Helena. And in that, we have over um um, this is just a little, this is just, it's three pages of this. And this is just one page of the amount of property owners that we were working on just to get easement on these properties, so that the county can go in there and maintain the ditches there uh that has been collapsed and 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 needed to be cleaned out. And with that, I can tell you there are over sixty-something uh parcel of land um from this area here, draining all the way to the marsh, going over and under Highway twenty-one uh for dr- for drainage. Um we have, in the last five years, we have gotten all these parcels uh in agreement uh to to allow the county access, except for two. And those two are basically holding out for different reasons. But the county cannot go in there unless they start condemnation procedure in order to get in there. These are some of the problems that we have with heirs' property, just trying to get drainage or trying to get a road, and a lot of these parcels have the same connection where we have a lot of parcels. Now, I know that if you are in the city of Beaufort, the land in the urban area, you have a clear title to your property, you need drainage, that can happen. Uh we just did a major drainage around the Marcy Oak area. I can tell you that some easements was probably hard to get, but you got it, and you were able to put a good drainage system in there for the folks in Marcy Oak. I do know that in certain development areas, you have that already solved. But when you come to heirs' property and where on St. Helena, um until recently, most of the land on St. Helena was really held in common. In common mean that if there was a road, everybody used that road. It wasn't my road or your road, it was a common road. Um we had um land, um um uh every community had the grave site, it was a common thing. Um it was on the water, so it becomes a problem now, because now there are people who do not live there anymore, who have sold the property and folks have bought that, and now they're claiming the grave site is causing some problem, but we'll work on that. At the same time, there were boat landings in 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 on St. Helena, it was in common. You know, if I live in Oaks, there was a, there was a boat landing that I could use, it wasn't mine. It was my neighbor or my family or somebody from that community, but everybody could fish, shrimp, whatever off of that boat landing to go out to the salt. It became a problem when that land was sold and that area now was cut off. So now we are looking for other areas, and of course, the county is coming with boat landings, which makes it easier for fishermen to go out now. But in every community, you had a boat landing that was in common. Most of the ground, most of the land was in common. To get from point A to point B, you just went straight. It didn't matter whether you crossed whoever line, I mean whoever land, that was the path to get to point A to point B. Now, what we have now is dealing with legislation that says, if it's private, it's owned, i- it's it's, it cannot you have funding for. However, if it's a road of of common public use, then it seems to me that the law, um um and you and um Mr. Kevin, he can uh can can comment on this. The law said if the county can find a common interest, a common goal, it seems to me, even though it's private, it is not private, because I can't close the road off. We tried that. The first property I showed you, we tried to close that road off. And we were taken to court, they said, "You can't do that," because it 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 actually was in existence for over twenty-something years. So to me, it becomes a common good area. And all we asking for in those areas that is a common good for emergency purpose, why can't the county go in there one time, just to keep that road clean, so that emergency vehicles uh can go in there? That's all. It's staying within the language of the Attorney General opinion, that the common use is there. Now, I don't know whether that's practical or not, I don't know whether that's, you know, that's what the lawyers are here for. But I understand not using public funds on private roads, I understand that. And I can tell you, back in the days when you had state legislators who ran the county, we probably had a lot of that, up to their door. But that was kinda, say, "Hey, that was bad, that's wrong, it was abuse of the system." Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was up on there.
Yeah, but you have, there has to be more of a suggestion with regard to what what you're trying to accomplish there and how we can do it within the existing uh within the existing ordinance, or how the existing ordinance could be amended to include those areas that you designate for the common good, but then we'd have to get an opinion as to whether or not that common good, if we could use public funds for the common good, and how would you identify those areas that are the common good? I mean, there are two hundred eighty-seven miles of of private roads out there. I think that, I wish Chief Klein was here, he said that he was going to try and identify those roads that needed the most attention. And he was gonna try and start a five oh one C three charitable organization to accept donations, so that he could go in and and um address the issue of road maintenance and the uh issues related to the uh growth of the trees over the roads. But when you hear the numbers of ten thousand dollars to thirty-five thousand dollars a mile, I don't know that he would ever be in a position to be able to raise donations in those amounts to handle those matters. And I understand, Mr. Glover, your point on on those situations where um there, roads are for common use, for the common good, but we're to to address that within the existing framework of the li- of the statutes that we have, I don't think we can do it. So there's gonna have to be a way, uh if that's the way we wanna proceed, uh we're going to have to, we're going to have to organize an effort to come up with a plan to address those roads that you've identified here, and perhaps other roads that may get special consideration. And I don't know if that's possible, quite frankly. As you said, that's going to have to be something that we're informed by our legal counsel as to whether public funds can actually be used for that. As we exist at the moment, I don't think it can be. So what we're seeking is a way for that to occur, and to get that kind of thing done, you're going to have to, or we're going to have to, under your leadership, put together a study to try and find out if there is a way to get that done. And I don't, I don't, I think that's a good idea. But I don't think that's gonna solve the immediate problem uh of the fire departments and the ambulances getting up and down those roads. And it doesn't appear as if we as a group can can assist anyone in getting that immediate action that people are requesting. Uh it's actually the emergency services who are requesting it. I don't think we've been able to find a way to get that done without the full participation and cooperation of the people who own the roads. So we're kinda stymied at the moment. Um but going forward, I don't know if there's a way for us to isolate those areas that you think people who own aren't really there, and people who don't own it are being badly affected by the fact that they're not even being asked if they want to participate, cause they have no right to participate in giving us access or being held accountable for the money. So I think that's a whole effort that's going to have to be undertaken if we wanna pursue this.
It just makes it
Dedicated energy, you know?
Right, it just makes it difficult when you're dealing with heirs' property.
Sure.
And and then a lot of the heirs are not even here.
That's right.
But you you're dealing with a legal document, so it makes it very difficult. Um we are addressing some heirs' property workshops, we're having some workshops to try to address heirs' property, but that's down the road for uh as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Um but um I lost my chain of thought, Mr. Chairman.
You're talking about the number of people, there are hundreds of heirs that own property, some of them don't even know they own it, because
I agree.
Until you do the research and they're informed that they're property owners, that's the first they've heard of it, you know? So it's a very con- it's a very confusing area, and I agree with you.
One one of the things that I um, and 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 I understand that um the chance, the likelihood of this passing is very slim.
Right.
Um and I hear, Mr. Chairman, um um encouraging um to to not pass it. Um but um I I would, I would ask, um, Mr. Chairman, that um you do not present this to a full council, just leave it where it is right now, um if you don't mind, until we can find a solution uh to move it forward. Now, I don't even know whether that's practical or not. Uh it'll never have um the votes um to pass it anyway. Um but redoing or restarting it um at some point in time again would be another issue.
Yeah.
But I would ask that uh this council go on record um to say that for emergency purposes, we need to invest uh in in vehicles that can actually access and traverse these property. For an example, we don't have, and I think council now is looking at purchasing a ambulance with four wheels, four wheel, full, a full-wheel drive.
Right.
Um that will help. I uh, in talking to the sheriff about that, he said to me, "I don't have a problem. I can get to any place I want to get to in this county," because he has vehicles that could do that. We may need to look at doing just that for rural area, particularly on St. Helena and Sheldon areas where you have a vehicle that can go in there, which means that the fire department has to have the same thing too, which means that we may have to put up some funds to allow the fire department to get four-wheel vehicles as well. I'm just putting that on the table.
Yeah, no, I I hear you, and I think that's a short-term remedy, where you can get those vehicles to go down those roads, so long as the trees don't get in the way, and the fire department has the tree issue. So I hear, I hear what you're saying, and you know, if that's the thing that will solve the problem in the short term, I think that's something that this group that would be looking at how to resolve these issues could recommend for the next budget cycle, which starts in July, right?
Yes.
I mean, or I mean, otherwise you have to go through a supplemental, but you're not gonna get it done that fast, so I think we're gonna have to be practical about it and realize it'll probably take three to four months to come up with a conclusion, and then you're into the next budget cycle anyway. So I don't think it's gonna be an immediate thing that you can resolve, except the ambulance. The ambulance i- isn't got a height problem, it's only got a wheel problem.
Yes.
So that might be able to be done with supplemental. I'd have to get some input from the uh from the executive staff there on the costs of one vehicle like that that could be used, and then it would be a matter of where do you deploy it? And where would, where would be the heaviest concentration of those roads that are impassable, that a four, a four-wheel vehicle could it, could pass?
Well, something like an ambulance you wanna have in a community, um so you don't want to put one on Sheldon.
We got, no, I know, we have to decide where you'd put it, and you'd have to put it where all those roads were essentially impassable, that makes sense.
Yes, yes, yes.
But I think in the short term, you could do that, but in the long term, all these other issues, I I don't have an answer for you, because I'm familiar with the problem with heirs' property, but the the common ownership of the roads for common good is a concept I'm not really familiar with, and I I don't know how that would play. And we'd have to wait for our legal team to uh to explore that somewhat and get back to us, you know?
Well, that was the language.
Trying to accomplish, I just don't think we can accomplish it with this, and we were first issue of of stalling the ordinance, I think we have to take action on the ordinance that's existing and have it either pass or go away. I don't think we can just leave it in limbo. If we pass it, then we have, we're faced with the problem of passing an illegal act, and then we'll probably have to repeal it by taking an action against ourselves. So I think we would look foolish on two different occasions if we pursue it that way.
No, you wouldn't look foolish now. You're just challenging the law, that's all.
Well, uh
You're just challenging the law.
Challenging the law.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you're not looking foolish. You're challenging the law. That's how I look at it.
You'll make that motion, right? Anyway, I think, I don't think, I don't know if we can, I I'd wait for some legal opinion as to whether a mo- a motion that's wa- awaiting third reading could wait it forever. I mean, and then the point of of doing that would be what essentially, we already know, we're try, we were trying to solve the problem, the first two votes were positive to try and solve the problem, until we found out this additional information. Mr. Kevin?
Right, well, just uh, just looking at the minutes of um the October meeting at which council voted to return this issue to the Community Services Committee, the uh motion was that um council postponed the public hearing and third reading. council postponed the public hearing and third reading of the ordinance until the December meeting and to refer it back to your committee for additional information to be provided to council.
So we'd have to bring it up at the December meeting.
So according to the minutes, the matter needs to be returned to council at its December meeting.
And at the December meeting, yeah, and at the December meeting, like I said, you, you'll either get a motion or not or a motion and a second or not, and then there'll be a vote, and the vote will either be positive or not. And if it passes, then we have additional problems of, of, uh, of going forward uh, with, uh, an action that may be eventually decided by a court of competent jurisdiction to have been, uh, an inappropriate action because you passed an illegal ordinance.
Or there could be a motion to refer it to a committee for further study and to bring back at the committee's discretion.
Exactly right, and I think that may be something that would, would, in the short term, perhaps allow us to get the four-wheel drives that Mr. Glover was referring to and solve that problem almost immediately if we have the money. And secondly, to look at the long-term, uh, implications of looking at those roads. And I don't know how we would identify them, but that would be the problem for a committee to solve. Which are those roads that are being used for the common good, so to speak, uh, if there is such a thing?
Mr. Chairman, it, it seems, looking back, we were trying to solve a problem with a shotgun instead of a pistol.
Yeah.
And, um, I think what we need is that information about the roads that, that are specific issues with heirs' property.
Yep.
With the fire department's help in the rural areas. And this information is very helpful that Public Works provided us. Uh, it gives the magnitude, how large it could be, but I don't know that it's that large a problem talking about the roads for common good. And that might be Public Facilities Committee or, um, your committee to look into with more details since the fire departments aren't here to tell us that yet. Um, but we need their help, I think, or, or EMS.
Mr. Kevinney's point, though, in December, we have to take an action on this ordinance. And I think that despite the fact that, uh, that, uh, it may be, um, unpalatable to some, we have to take an action, and I think what we'll end up doing is it will fail, I think. Um, if it does, that doesn't mean it's over. It simply means that we have to regroup with a referral back to committee for further study on the short-term remedies for access to areas that are impassable through the purchase of vehicles that can get in there. And in the long term, York, I think, addressed the issue, uh, of the roads, as you point out, the information of people who live there who don't own it and people who own it and don't live there. And, and then try to come up with a plan, particularly as it relates to heirs' property, which is a, a, an issue that has so many facets in this county and in this state that it is a, it's a issue that is in the courts on a daily basis. Master inequity is dealing with it all the time. Magistrates are dealing with it all the time. And it's almost an unsolvable problem in a lot of ways because there's so many people involved who never want to agree on anything. You know, with regard to particularly disposal of a property, which is a whole different issue than giving people access for emergency vehicles. So, um, I think we're going to have to move this along here today. Thank you, Neil. Uh, I think, I'm sorry to make you keep standing there. If we need, if we need you back again, uh, I'll, I'll get you back up. But at this point, I'm going to ask the committee to, um, take an action to send this forward for, um, review and consideration of full council with all the information that we have, um, discussed here today. And I'm not sure if it needs to go forward with a recommendation that we not take action on the third reading or let the full council decide that we've recommended that it be presented to council for their review and consideration as to what kind of action they prefer to take. I don't know if that's a reasonable way to do it.
I think, Mr. Chairman, the motion is on the floor. Uh, that Mr. Kevinney talked about, um, it was laid on the table, it was postponed until, um.
December.
December.
Yeah.
And so, uh, should be on the agenda to deal with because, um, it was postponed specifically for that date.
Right.
And at that time, um, when that motion is presented, uh, because the motion was already made, if I'm not mistaken, and seconded, and then the motion was postponed for that particular date. So that motion is already on the table, um, to move forward, and then we can vote it up or down at that time.
Okay.
Or do what you suggested.
Information.
Yes, sir. Right.
And at the same time, uh, maybe amended even there for development of a committee to study the short-term and long-term remedies.
And I would, I would, I would support that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kevinney, that, uh.
Mr. Cunningham had his hand raised.
Sorry. Mr. Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just willing to make the motion and send it back to council um, in a few, Mr. McKellen, before we, um, even go for a motion or second to give the exact same update that you gave at the beginning of this. I think that would be appropriate to get that information out quickly to everyone.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Kevinney, we're good with, uh, this going back without a recommendation for action other than to consider the new information that we're, uh, now privy to?
I believe so.
Okay. Yep. So then, uh, I'll have a motion here then to send that, I need a motion here to send that back to council.
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
For them to dispose of it with the new information that we have. So Mr. Cunningham's made that motion. I need a second. Mr. Glover will second. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. Thank you. We'll move that forward without objection. Are there any objections? We have no objections. Thank you all very much for this lively discussion on a very important matter. Thank you very much. Okay, um, we have a new item on the agenda today, which will be item number eight, which is a motion, um, that I will need to recommend approval of the appointment of Marilyn Harris as the Beaufort County Council Representative on the Beaufort Housing Authority Board. May I have that motion?
So, oh.
So moved. So moved by Mr. Somerville?
I'll second.
Thank you, Alice. Appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll move this forward without objection. Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, this motion carries. We are now at the end of this, uh, session, uh, which I have to say I've enjoyed very much. It was good discussion, as I said, on an important topic, and we'll look forward to bringing this up again on December twelfth for the full council to consider. Is there anybody who has anything else, uh, with regard to, uh, today? Okay, well, let me just end then by saying this is the last meeting, uh, sadly, of the Community Services and Public Safety Committee for the calendar year. And at the end of this calendar year, or shortly thereafter, Colonel Phil Foot will be leaving us to go on to, uh, private practice, uh, of being a private investigator somewhere in Miami, I think. Miami Iced, I think they're going to call it. I've known Colonel Foot, uh, as most of you know, for half our adult lives. And, uh, we both come from the same area. In fact, the first time I met him and heard where he was from, I said, how you doing? And he knew exactly what I was talking about because he said in response, I'm doing. How are you doing? So I hate to see you go. Uh, I'm happy that you've decided to, um, find something else that you're interested in. But I will miss you here and your wise counsel, uh, on a daily basis and person and on the telephone when I would call up, whining and weeping and gnashing my teeth, asking you to tell me what I should do. So, uh, I'll track you down, though. You can count on that. I'll get that cell phone somewhere. So our best wishes to you as you wrap this up. You've been a stalwart here. You've done great work for all of us in a number of positions. And I want you to know how much we appreciate that. And I'm sure that at full council, you'll hear me say that all again, but I did want to say it here uh, in this group where you come faithfully, uh, to help us understand all of the issues important in your particular sphere of responsibility. So thank you very much, Colonel Bonvoyage. Okay, I think we're done here, and it's not even three o'clock. Thank you all very much. Appreciate that. We are adjourned.